Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 1,184th public meeting and regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The commission's recommendation is forwarded to the city council for the final determination as to whether a petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to city council. Resolutions that are adopted by the city planning commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the commission with both approving and denying resolutions which the commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
President.
Ms. McQ.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ventura's absent. Karen Magnos here. Chairman Rocha.
Is here. And also with us tonight we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our planning departments, and we will introduce them shortly as we get into our meeting. They will give background information on our agenda items, and then we'll have an opportunity for the petitioners to come forward, speak to the item, and then anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak for or against can also come forward, and we'll prompt you along as we go with our meeting. So we're going to start with item number one on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2022-01-02-01 submitted by LAG Development requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.05 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance to demolish the existing building on-site and use the property for the storage and display of vehicles in connection with an automobile dealership operation, La Fontaine Hyunde of Livonia, at 34801 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Stark and Wayne Roads and the northwest quarter of Section 33.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project would convert the former Doughboy Donut property, which is on Plymouth Road, for use as a vehicle display lot in connection with an existing automobile dealership. The property is now under the ownership of La Fontaine Hyunde of Livonia. It's at the southwest corner of Plymouth Road and Laurel Road. The site is a little over a half an acre in area. It has 173 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road and approximately 147 feet of frontage on Laurel Road. There is a building on the site. It's about 2,150 square feet. This site was originally developed as a gas station, and then it was converted to a donut shop sometime around 1975. As you can see from the zoning map, the current zoning is C1 local business. There is a petition currently under review to change the zoning to C2 general business. City council gave first reading on the rezoning petition on October 18th of 2021. Per Section 6.05 of the zoning ordinance, C2 zoning allows for automobile sales as a waiver use, subject to review and approval by both the Planning Commission and city council. Under that same section, there are a number of special requirements that apply to new and used car lots. They include, first, the site must be at least a half an acre in size and have 100 feet of frontage on a major thoroughfare. No vehicles can be parked within 20 feet from the front lot line. All exterior lighting must be shielded and deflected so as not to create a nuisance. The number of vehicles to be displayed or stored is determined by the city, and there can be no outside storage of disabled, damaged, or unlicensed vehicles. As mentioned previously, this parcel is over a half an acre in area, and it does contain over 100 feet of frontage. It would be combined with the adjacent dealership property, which is by itself 2.2 acres and includes another 175 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road. So the site is well over the minimum size requirement and meets the frontage requirements as well. The site plan shows that with the building gone, the site would have the capacity to accommodate up to 40 vehicles. The subject property currently has access to Plymouth Road via two driveway approaches. The existing dealership also has two other driveways, one on Plymouth Road and one on Laurel. The two properties would be connected by means of a new drive opening that would be created in the southeast corner of the property. Let me, I'm going to go back to the main aerial just so that you can see where this property lies in relationship to the other, the main dealership. So the Hyunde dealership is located here. This is L-shaped parcel. You can see the building. The former Doughboy Donut property is located here. It's highlighted in yellow. This building that was mentioned, the 2,150 square foot building, would be removed. So the site plan we're looking at this evening is this parcel here. There was discussion at the study meeting about the possibility of eliminating one of the three Plymouth Road approaches and being converted to landscaping. In terms of the setback, there are three parking spaces that are encroaching within the required 20-foot setback. This is going to require city council to waive that special provision. Additional green areas, as you can see, would be added along Plymouth Road to accommodate the landscaping that is required pursuant to Article 10 of the zoning ordinance. Required are three full-size trees, two ornamental trees, and 21 shrubs. Landscaping would also be added in the southwest corner of the site. In addition, the plan includes PRDA streetscape improvements in the form of brick pillars and ornamental fencing. So overall, the submitted landscape plan does comply with Article 10. Lastly, with respect to site lighting, photometric plan has been provided. It shows six pole-mounted fixtures as required. These would be full cutoff fixtures. They would have maximum height of 20 feet. The illumination levels vary from a high of approximately eight-and-a-half-foot candles, which is at the center of the property, to about two-foot candles along the edges. There's a little more than what the ordinance recommends, but since the lighting will not directly affect any residential areas, council can approve the higher-than-average illumination levels. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence on this item.
Yes, please.
First is a letter from the engineering division. It's dated January 21st, and it reads, "The existing building is currently serviced by Public Water Main and Sanitary Sewer as well as private storm sewer. Since the owner is planning to demolish the existing building and not replace it with a structure, there should not be any impacts to the existing facilities. The owner will need to obtain demolition permits from this department should the petition be approved. It should be noted that developer may be required to obtain a permit from the Michigan Department of Transportation should any work occur within the Plymouth Road right-of-way." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. We have a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Public Safety Livonia Fire and Rescue. This is dated January 26th and signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. We have a similar letter coming from the Division of Police dated January 20th and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. A letter of no objection from the Inspection Department that's dated February 4th and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. We have, excuse me, a letter from the Department of Finance dated January 26th. They indicate that there was unpaid water and sewer charges. However, those have been taken care of. That letter was signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And another departmental letter, this is from the Office of the Treasurer dated February 7th, also indicating that they have no objections to the proposal, and that letter is signed by Linda Sheil, Treasurer of the City. And lastly, we have an email correspondence that we received today, February 22nd. This is from Jim Dupuy, and it reads, "Livonia Planning Commission, I wish to offer the following input regarding this request by LAG. I do not oppose the demolition of this building or the use for storage and display. However, as a 28-plus-year resident of Laurel Street, I have attended several meetings related to our neighboring businesses. There is an existing council resolution, number 182-03, adopted by the Livonia City Council on April 23rd, 2003, with conditions that read, in part, 'For safety purposes, the parking or standing of delivery trucks and car haulers on Laurel Avenue is strictly prohibited. All vehicle loading and unloading at this dealership shall be accomplished on the premises only and not within any public rights-of-way, as shown on the truck hauler unload area plan marked Sheet 1A of 4 dated March 13th, 2003. We would appreciate that consideration be given to designate an area in this parcel for loading and unloading car haulers and tow trucks. I met with Mr. Matt Shabla in September of 2021 to discuss my concerns. He related that they have an off-site location for this practice, but I believe it is often ignored by hauling and towing companies. Car haulers continue to use Laurel for loading and unloading vehicles. Most often, they drive south on Laurel Street when finished offloading. This continues to be the practice, and as recent as yesterday, February 21st, a car hauler drove south from the dealership. Thanks for your consideration." And it is signed by James Dupuy, who gives his address as 111-96 Laurel Street, Livonia, 4815. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions for our planning staff. Our petitioner is in the audience. If you'd like to come to one of the podiums, you can introduce yourself and tell us about your project. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Taylor Lynn. I'm with LAG Development, La Fontaine Automotive Group. Our address is 4,000 West Highland Road in the city of Highland. I'm here tonight with Matt Shabla. He is the General Sales Manager for both our Dearborn and our Livonia complex. As you guys have already gone over, we are here to present our project located at 34801 Plymouth Road, formerly known as the Doughboy Donut Shop. And our intention with this parcel is to beautify it by demolishing the building, adding some more landscaping, and then turning this eyesore into a parking lot displaying beautiful new vehicles.
Okay, great. Do we have any questions? Thank you for your presentation, by the way.
No problem.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Lynn?
Just one quick one. Have you worked with the Plymouth Road Development Authority?
Yes.
Okay, you have?
Yes.
So you have a plan that's worked out with them?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions? Ms. McQ?
I do think that it's a valid point or question about the car haulers going up and down Laurel. Have you addressed that at all?
You know, I'm actually going to bring Matt up. This would be his territory.
No worries. Thank you.
So all instructions for all OEMs, all semi-trucks that drop off either Hyundai's, Mazdas, or Volkswagens are communicated with their car haulers to drop off at our commuter lot, which is about a half-mile down the street. I'm not aware of any semis dropping off cars, nor have I seen. And if they do, and I'm on the property, I make sure that we get them down there, they're not dropping there, and they drop them down the street where all the new cars are received. Then our porters take them. They go down there with the keys, they grab them, and they take them to our current location and then PDI them. Now, if there's any service cars or anything like that being unloaded or unloaded, we do the same thing. I've instructed all the managers to do the same thing of any car haulers that are there. So, you know, we're continuously working on it. I'm not going to say it's perfect, but I think we're a lot better than what it was before, and we'll continue to make sure that we address it moving forward. And all that communication was done with all the manufacturers six to eight months ago when we took over the property, and I made sure very crystal clear, there's no semis to be unloading brand-new cars on Laurel Street, so.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Ms. McQ.
Mr. Toramina, is there anything we can do about that or maybe add to this discussion? Because I do get it. I mean, I really do understand it might sound kind of petty, but like, we were talking about potholes when we walked in today, and just the conditions of our streets anyways are not always the best or always the most passable or wide enough if you're parking, so.
I deal with a lot of the similarities of how close it is to the main road of the Dearborn complex and the confines of how much we work with and the residents and how close the residents are. So I am very compassionate with that, I mean, as well as the city council and the planning commission of Dearborn, I have very similar conversations. You know, we can go a step further, and if there's anybody parking or speeding or any of our employees parking there, we can do internal ticketing that we've done at Dearborn and some conversation like that. And if there, the problem, the problem lies typically with the independents that are picking up one car or dropping off one car that's either used or they're transporting it of some wholesale piece, and we're continuously working out that. Now, if we have more room, I think they would be able to pull in if they're dropping one car, picking one car up, or a tow truck or something, if we have some more room and access points there with this new parcel, I think we can accommodate them a little better as well and our neighbors, so.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All set, Ms. McQ?
Thanks, though, thanks.
All right, good. Good questions. Ms. Smiley.
Are we closing one of those entrances or exits on Plymouth Road?
So we've talked about that.
Okay.
You know, we're not particularly opposed to it. We kind of want to lay out the plans and all that stuff, too. You know, that still leaves us two, so I'm not opposed to it. I don't think LAG Development is opposed to it, but when we move forward with the plans, I think we can kind of get more details of mapping out everything, but I'm not opposed to it, so.
Okay, and then back to Ms. McQ's question. Are we aware of the one on February 21st?
I'm not aware of the one on February 21st, no.
Okay, that gentleman mentioned. I'm hoping that if this clears out, they'd be more inclined to go in there than to turn down to.
Absolutely. I totally agree with you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Mr. Long?
Not really a question, but a comment. I know we've talked about eliminating one of those curb cuts, and you're considering it, but given this information about the trucks going through, in order to maximize the ability for people to swing out of the.
In and out.
So you may, we may want to reconsider if, you know.
Yeah. That's the other thing, too, if we want to map out them coming in, the smaller trucks. I'm talking like a single or double car hauler. Because I know no semis are dropping off. We're not pulling, I know, if there is a semi ever, I'm always on top of it right away or my team is, because we're not parking giant semis on Laurel Street. I know that for a fact. I have seen one or two that are small car haulers that, you know, load, they're pulled by a pickup truck, they load one or two, or they dropping off real quick. But yes, the large car haulers aren't there. They're dropping down the street. But yeah, if we have more entrances and exits, they could swing in and swing out and drop off or pick up any vehicles, so that is a good point.
Yeah, I mean, this is something that I was at the study session kind of in favor of, but I'm kind of reconsidering it now, so I'm interested to see as this progresses. I don't need an answer today, obviously.
Okay.
As this progresses down the road, though, interested to see what you come up with. Thank you.
Yeah, and we want to be good neighbors. I mean, you know, we truly do. We want to be good stewards of the community. We want to comply with anything that the city needs as far as greenage and foliage, and we've improved a lot of that landscaping. We put it, you know, they requested those original pine trees that go along the, by the Burger King, that the, there was 12 or 13 pine trees that were supposed to be there in the original plans of the site. We put those in right away, spent a bunch of money on that right in the fall there, cleaned up all the weeds, did all the landscaping, and we're going to continue to improve the properties as well, so.
Great, great news. Any other questions for our petitioner? No questions from anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? Feel free to come forward, sir. I'll just ask that you start with your name and address, please.
How do you do, folks?
Good evening.
Brad Arnold. My address is 11205 Laurel, and in July, I'll be a 30-year resident right there. I'm right to the south of the dealership. Could you put that one up right there? That one. My question is, and I don't think it's been explained or not, I don't have a problem tearing it down. That's a good improvement. Are they opening up the yard, though, is what I'm asking? Are they opening that yard, and is it going to be all the way open to the commercial wall? We've had cars roll out of there in 30 years. Kids and people jump over the commercial wall from the Burger King area. That was my concern. I was wondering if it's enclosed on the yard, or will it be open? And if it's open, will they work on the cosmetics of where the back was? Where that yellow line is, is a fence right now with trees. It's overgrown. They've done a lot of good things, like you said. They put the trees in, picked it up, made it a whole lot nicer than it's been in the last 10 years.
I think to answer your question, Mr. Toramina can help by pointing out as well, the intent is to, is to make this part of the entire site, to make it look as though it's one large parking area, and there would be an opening that Mr. Toramina's pointing to with his mouse that would be.
Yeah, that's the one, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, there would be an open, yes.
Are you guys opening that all up and not leaving it a closed yard?
Correct. It would be opened up so that it would all be one, you could flow through the property.
My thing is that it becomes safe, you know, that you basically open it up to the back of my house from, is what you're doing. See, my house is right here. It's the first house, and then that would just open that all back up. Basically, they got gates here and fenced in all the other way around.
I see what you're saying.
So I'm asking for cosmetic, that it's nice and that it's safe, you know? I'd hate to see them open it up and have all kinds of different kind of folks coming in, so.
Right, definitely understood.
That's my concern.
Mr. Bonjero, I think has a question for you.
Mr. Chair, are you think, I don't think that they're taking that back wall down next to his house, though.
Correct.
They're not going to open that. It's up further on the lot, behind the Doughboy building. They're going to open that little section up so they can get through to the big lot, but they're not going to come back all by your house and take the wall down.
No, no, I'm not saying by my house. I'm saying right on the edge of that property is trees and a fence, and that's what I'm asking. Are they going to clear that and open that all up?
That we'd have to ask the petitioner, yeah. I know that there was talk at the study session of opening it up so they could get through to the big lot, but I don't know if they, if they were taking down all of that.
So right now, if.
You'll have to use a microphone.
So right now, that building, our current Hyundai building between the square of the yellow and the service, yeah, right there, that's all open right there, like between, yeah, like that's, there's no fence dividing our lot right there, yeah, where he's kind of going in there, so that's all open. There is obviously fencing along the border of the Burger King and trees as well, yeah, and there, and as, right there, yep, that fence has all been repaired as well, and that's fenced in. Now there's like a half fence in the front there, but there's no fencing, so somebody can walk all the way through already. It's not totally enclosed right now.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, are you taking that out and clearing all that part out of by the building?
Near the microphone.
So you have a open area?
Sir, you'll.
Should that be open? That's, that's what I'm asking.
Sir, you'll need to talk to us through the microphones that everybody can hear on TV as well.
Well, I was asking about the, we can tear a building down, you know?
Right, right.
But if you're going to improve it, then, you know, I was asking if they're tearing that down, and that's going to be part of tearing the building down, is opening all that up and creating a open area there?
Yeah, I much, all we know is that what they're proposing, and they can, they can come back up and detail this a little bit more if they wish, but is that once the building's torn down, there is going to be an opening in the fence that's currently between the donut property and their dealership parking lot to allow for cars to flow, for pedestrians or, well, not for pedestrians, but customers to be able to flow through and shop for cars.
Okay.
There's not going to be any changes to any of the fencing that happens on the western edge of the property along Burger King or there, or along the southern property that abuts you. That wall will be there, nothing will change there as far as we're aware. And there will be some additional landscaping. There's going to be actually quite a bit of landscaping that they're adding to this site to add some greenery as well and make it look nice, and they want it to be a nice-looking showroom, if you will, parking lot for their new vehicles, so I'm sure they're not going to have any debris or anything unsightly there.
Okay, so I still haven't heard if that's opening. Is that all opening?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Toramina.
This area is not going to be fully opened. Only a driveway connection between the two properties where the old building or where the building currently sits.
Okay.
This area will continue. It'll remain as it is, so.
Okay.
This one, if what you're asking is, will this area all be opened up to park, the answer is no.
Okay.
There's some landscaping and I believe some fencing, a gate right here. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and I don't know if this allows for any current open, if they can access here, but there's going to be additional landscaping provided here that'll pretty much close off any opportunity for a connection between the two properties here. The only opening is going to be located here, as I indicated. Now, going back to the area by your property, nothing is shown on the plan that would impact or change the buffer that exists between your house and the, the property line.
Okay.
The common property line that you share with.
I think you've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, all right. And that's accurate, correct? Okay. All right, we got you settled now?
Yeah, I'm settled. I just want to make sure we got some safety and.
Sure.
We got a little bit of cosmetic, so we look good, you know? You can put lipstick on a pig, but she's still a pig.
Exactly. One thing that we did talk to the petitioner about at our study meeting is lighting and security.
Yeah.
And they're going to make sure to have adequate lighting that can apparently change in intensity if there's motion on the property and so on, so that that way they can provide for security for that, that site at night, too, so.
And we could also point out that it's likely that LAG will be back before this commission sometime later this year with plans to make some changes to the dealership building. I would say that this is, this will be an improvement. Having this opening here now provides that opportunity for vehicles to exit out to Plymouth Road, where currently these cars, with this area being blocked off, probably have to come back around to Laurel and either exit out here or come back out to Plymouth Road. So I think actually it's, it will improve the situation for the, for the neighbors to the south.
Yeah, definitely. It would draw traffic directly to Plymouth Road instead of Laurel.
I think so.
Exactly.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, sir. All right, there is no one else in our audience, so I don't think there's anyone else wishing to speak. We always like to give the petitioner the last word before we make our decision. Is there anything else that you'd like to add? Ms. Lynn, or?
I just wanted to address that gentleman's concern about security and go a little bit more in-depth with our lighting system.
Please do.
You covered it pretty much. We do, we're able to adjust the lighting intensity. Usually in the evening, we tone it down, and we do have lighting controls and motion sensors, so in the evening, we turn them down or completely off, and when somebody goes into the lot, when the lights go on or grow in intensity, the police are aware someone's in there that's not supposed to be in there. So they actually, the police actually like it because it helps them monitor the dealerships in the surrounding area. So.
Great.
That would be our security for that lot.
Excellent, excellent. We appreciate you explaining that. And if there's any other questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner, I don't think there is. Everything's all set. I can close the public hearing at this time then, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Smiley.
I will make an approving resolution that the request to demolish an existing commercial building and establish a lot for the display of vehicles in connection with the automobile dealership at 34801 Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. That the site plan identified as two of three dated January the 26th, 2022, as revised, prepared by Manic Smith Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except that one of the site's two driveways on Plymouth Road, am I going to keep that in there? Shall be replaced, or are they, how do you want to say that?
Well, it's your choice, if you want to leave it there or not.
I think I will not leave it there because, as Commissioner Long stated, if it can help the flow of traffic and you work with Plymouth, so will, anyway.
Okay.
And you can work with the landscaping, that's even better. Okay, that the number of vehicles to be stored and displayed on this site shall be limited to a total of 40 vehicles, and unless waived by a two-thirds majority of the city council, no vehicles for sale shall be displayed closer than the 20, 20 feet from the front line, from front lot line. That parking lot shall be repaired, resealed, and restriped as necessary to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department. Parking spaces shall be double striped at 10 feet wide and 20 feet in length. That unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. That the display of any vehicles on car lifts is strictly prohibited. That the landscape plan identified as three of three dated January the 26, 2022, as revised, prepared by Manic Smith Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That all disturbed lawn areas, including roads right of way, shall be sotted in lieu of hydroseeding. That the petitioner shall work with the Planning Department and the Plymouth Road Development Authority on plans to install additional landscaping and other land, streetscape improvements such as brick piers and ornamental fencing along Plymouth Road. That all light fixtures shall be, shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded so as to minimize straight light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. And pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Is there support? I hear Mr. Bonjero. We have a motion to approve offered by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mr. Bonjero, with a slight modification to item number one, which would keep the two existing driveways open for now. Is there any discussion on that motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Ms. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Chairman Wolschel?
Votes aye, motion passes, and we'll go to City Council with an approving recommendation. We wish you luck with your project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming tonight. And with that, we now can move on to item number two.
And that is petition 2022-01-06-01, submitted by the City of Livonia Planning Commission on its own motion pursuant to Section 13.15 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended in accordance with Public Act 110 of the 2006 Michigan Zoning Enabling Act as amended to consider multiple revisions to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance in order to correct certain defects and add and delete provisions and provide clarifications to others.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, and Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item involves changes to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance. As you know, the new zoning ordinance was adopted last August, and after six months of applying the new regulations, staff has discovered several items that were somehow overlooked and missing and which should be added back additionally. We feel that this presents a great opportunity to make other desired improvements to the ordinance. So the requested changes affect 35 different sections of the code. A few of the more significant changes, and I'll just go over these briefly. They include, first, expanding the use of the planned developments within the city's residential districts, changing ambulance services, local and suburban passenger, bus, taxi, cab, and trucking transportation terminals, changing those from a permitted use to a waiver use in the city's industrial districts. We are also adding back the provisions for industrial parks that previously existed in ordinance number 543, and this is something that came up just recently with a couple of site plans for, at Rosati Park. So it was important, it is important that we get those reinstituted into the zoning ordinance. We're increasing, we're recommending that the allowable floor area ratio in our multi-family district NM2 be increased from 30 to 35 percent. We're also recommending that we add back the provisions for restricting the storage of materials and equipment in the front side and rear yards within the city's commercial districts. This, again, is something that, for whatever reason, was inadvertently omitted from the new zoning ordinance, and we found a place to put that back into the code. We're requesting that to eliminate accessory dwelling units as a permitted use in one-family residential districts. This actually, and I showed you this last week, this language exists in two different spots within the ordinance, and both of those sections would be eliminated. One is in Article 6, the other one is in Article 7. Also being eliminated are the zones that require minimum house sizes, since these are now all obsolete. In fact, when we adopted the new zoning map, we removed any reference to Zones A, B, and C, which for a long time were part of the actual zoning district or designations, but no longer exist. We're including retail sales in our C4 high-rise commercial zoning district. Why that was left out, I don't know, but certainly the fact that it is a commercial zoning district should allow for limited retail sales. Number nine, we're adding a provision that will allow limited projections of chimneys, eaves, and other architectural features within the required yard setbacks on residential properties. And this is another item that we discussed where it's not uncommon to have slight projections into setback, required setbacks for features on houses like chimneys, eaves, and those things. We have separate rules as applied to porches and decks and those items, but some of these more minor architectural features, they go unaccounted, they were unaccounted for in the new zoning, so we want to add that language back in there. We're adding back the allowance for reduced parking stall dimensions in the case of office developments. So where we typically require 10 by 20 spaces, oftentimes in office complexes where employees park for long periods of time, we really don't see the need for the 10-foot-wide spaces. Nine feet seems to be appropriate in those circumstances. It saves land, and since it's not used for customer parking, there's less risk of vehicles being damaged. Eleven, making sure that screen walls are the preferred means by which to buffer non-residential developments from residential properties. Mr. Long had asked, as we were going through the restrictions, that that should be the preference over the landscape buffering. So we have drafted changes to that section, so if you go, if you refer to Article 10, or Article 10, Section 10.03, you'll see how we've modified that language to address that concern. We're once again allowing for separation agreements between property owners who desire certain buffering standards and are willing to avoid going through the variance process. So there are times when the owner of a commercial property is required to put up a wall, but the adjacent property owner might, residential property owner might have an existing fence, and they say, no, we prefer to keep our vinyl fence. So as long as the two agree, we allow for these five-year separation agreements, and we've done a number of these, and they work well. And again, that was left out of the new code book, and we feel that it's an important item to put back in. We're increasing the allowable area for monument signs in the C1 local business district from 20 square feet to 30 square feet. Why we reduced it in the first place, I don't know. It seems logical that for these multi-building complexes that the amount of sign area would be at least equal to if it was a single commercial building. So that's the reason for that change. We're adding back a provision that requires site plan review for certain commercial and other non-residential developments, as well as for condominiums and site condominiums. Again, language that was inadvertently omitted. I'll just say that we're putting back, we're eliminating the application fee requirement for site plan review since this was recently moved to the Code of Ordinances. And then lastly, removing the requirement for the city clerk to provide inserts in the case of rezoning notification signs. So it's our opinion that these changes will result in a better overall zoning ordinance and one that helps achieve the overall goals and objectives of the master plan. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. And there's no further correspondence from any other departments for this item, is there?
There is none, that's correct. And the report for a prepared resolution should be located at the end of your staff report.
I do see it in our packet, thank you. And just for the audience's benefit, who may be reading this or seeing it online or whatever, we did at our study meeting go through an exhaustive review of each of these changes at our study meeting, and really appreciate that detail. We've had an opportunity now for the past week, between the study meeting and now, to further review these changes. Is there any questions from any of our commissioners for our planning staff?
Not really a question, more of a comment, that this must have taken a great deal of effort and experience to make these changes, and I appreciate them being done. Thank you.
Yeah, it was interesting because between the Planning Department and the Inspection Department, as we, the real world, real-world application of the code, you know, we find, we notice items. So there was constant correspondence back and forth between the departments as to where is this, why is it missing, and what should we do to fix it? And so over the course of the last six months, we've been logging all of those, and that kind of, that helped, that aided us quite a bit in drafting the changes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. And that's a great point. You know, the zoning ordinance is over 200 pages. It was almost a clean sheet, you know, rewrite from scratch over a period of many, many months, reviewed by many departments. And at some point, when you're looking at all these words, you end up getting cross-eyed, or you get sort of tunnel vision. And it's not easy to see everything clearly, so it's good that this process is happening to constantly review and modify. And that's the intent of this new zoning ordinance, is to be flexible, and I think this is a great example of that.
Any other comments or questions from anybody? This is a public hearing. There is no one else in our audience to speak to this, so I will not look for anybody to come forward. If there is no other comments or questions from anyone, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
And Mr. Long?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that having conducted a public hearing with regard to petition 2022-01-06-01 submitted by the City Planning Commission on its own motion pursuant to Section 13.15 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended and in accordance with Public Act 110 of 2006, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act as amended to consider multiple revisions to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, the City Planning Commission does hereby recommend approval of the proposed amendments version 2.0 dated February 22, 2022, as prepared by the City of Livonia Planning Commission for the following reasons. Number one, that the proposed language amendments are needed to correct certain errors and omissions that were overlooked with the adoption of the original Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance. Number two, that the proposed amendments add and delete certain provisions in a way that will serve to improve the effectiveness of the city's land use regulations. Number three, that the proposed amendments will serve to further the implementation of the goals and objectives of the Livonia Vision 21 master plan and are in the best interests of the community as a whole. And number four, that the proposed amendments to are in full compliance with the requirements of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, Public Act 110 of 2006, as amended.
Is there support for that?
Support.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Karen Magno. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there is none, if the secretary can call the roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Ms. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Chairman Wolschel?
Votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Toramina, for your hard work on that, and of course also to your staff. And that takes us to item number three on our agenda.
The approval of the minutes of the 1,183rd Public Hearing and Regular Meeting held by the Planning Commission on February 8, 2022.
All members were present for that meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by
Support.
Mrs. McHugh. If there's no discussion, I think I can safely show six to approve the minutes. No one's objecting, so we will note that. And that takes us to the end of our agenda this evening. Is there any further business to come before the commission? If there's none, a motion to adjourn would be in order. All right, thank you, Mr. Bonjero, and supported by
I'll support that.
by Mrs. Smiley. So we have Bonjero and Smiley on a motion to adjourn. And again, if there's no objection, I think we can safely show six to adjourn our meeting tonight. I see no objections. So with that, we will conclude this meeting tonight. I want to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to our community, and we will adjourn the meeting tonight at 7:46 PM and wish a good night to Livonia.